Hi, I'm Robin Schulz with the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Council President Lyda, Council Pro Tim Posey, Council Member Sweeney,
Here.
Council Member Driver, Council Member Murphy,
Here.
Council Member Middlewicks,
You.
Council Member McFlinton,
Here.
All right, so the purpose of this meeting is a community meeting. Steven Scarborough, we just went over his name multiple times, so I hope I did not impact it.
It's close enough.
It's close enough. On behalf of the residents of Inverness Center Drive, I have some questions about particular developments. So I'll turn it over to colleague Dr. Middlewicks to offer any type of feedback and just kind of order of the meeting and the purpose of it as well, too.
This was initiated through an email from the residents of Inverness Center Drive, like Council Murphy said. It's a good opportunity to have a town hall meeting and for elected officials directly have a conversation with affected residents of the area. Hear from you, it's a great opportunity to honestly build some trust between citizens and government. As elected officials, we always enjoy the opportunity to have a more interactive process. Council meetings are a business meeting and can be very restrictive today. Town hall meetings are much more, less structured, informal, and gives us a good opportunity to have those conversations as needed. So Mr. Scarborough, you initiated this, we open forward. Residents, please.
And I have to say that when I don't... You can hear me? Yeah, okay. All the colleagues did let us know they had other obligations at the same time. One, two, when they have a business meeting and current as a family matter he has to attend to, he told us early. So I did want to make sure I make that statement.
Well, thank you very much for having us in. This all came about there on Inverness Center Drive, you know, we have traffic concerns. In fact, we have traffic concerns today and we're concerned about the additional traffic that this brings in because if you live in the area and you know that the easiest way to where we are is downing from the Center Drive, whether you're coming in from Chelsea or coming in from Birmingham. And so we have, you know, we have four neighborhoods, two of which are age controlled. Of course, the Danbury, the big houses, they call it, and then the Danbury cottages. They do have a pedestrian control, but these intersections are uncontrolled. And the increased traffic, you know, we're concerned about the safety in our community. And I guess I'd like to bring up Gary Kitchen's. Gary represents the Danbury cottages.
Could you turn on the slides that we sent you? Do any of these? Basically, all four of the residential communities along Inverness Center Drive are on the same page. My name's Gary Kitchen. I've been a resident of Danbury cottages for eight years, 84 years old, and I've watched the traffic increase considerably since we've been there over the eight years. Now, we know originally whenever Inverness Center Drive was started back in the 70s, it was intended to be a commercial property all along that way. In fact, Danbury cottages is in a location now where they were originally scheduled to have an office building that did not quite materialize. But what did materialize is four vibrant communities of residents living along that road. Two of those communities, Danbury and Inverness, with 250 residents retired over the age of 80. At Danbury cottages, 48 cottages that were purchased by individuals. It says on the next slide, if you'll hit that, that the residents in Danbury cottages are over 70 years of age, and that was done out of kindness. I think there was a couple ladies decided that they didn't want to say their exact age. But the reality is that we are over 80 on average in that community. Everyone at the big house, as it's called, saved their money, worked hard, and decided that they wanted to retire there in this nice community. Windy street, a lot of shrubs, beautiful walkway with about four or five blind spots if you're driving through and you're trying to get at. The people in Danbury cottages felt the very same way. It says it's an over 55 community, but if you're 55 years old and you're driving through Danbury cottages, you're looking for your parents' house. So of the four communities, two of them are average over 80. These people, you don't like to talk about it much, but I've been there eight years. And when I moved in, there had been 28 home changes in that length of time. The majority of those people have either passed away or moved over to the big house. This is where the elderly go in their final spot, where most of them are thinking. A lot of times they overpay for the cottages and they're not too worried about it because they know it's going to be their children's problem when they pass away. So as you set up and you set the quote BJ's in motion and you have an exit there, that exit is probably going to increase the traffic flow to the point where most 80-plus-year-old folks will be extremely concerned about their safety and their peace of mind in this pleasant, foreign community homesite. Now, I know it started out to be a commercial property, but it didn't happen. It become residential. And now we're saying we're going to make it commercial because that's what it is. But the people living in those two over 80 average age communities went to these communities because it was peaceful, it was enjoyable, it was a nice place to be. And if that exit is allowed out of BJ's in or out, that will no longer be that way. Now, you've done a good job, I think, putting exits and entrances on 280 and on the other street. We don't need that here. We're not trying to fight them from the way in. What we're trying to say is we want to live with it, but we can live with that if that exit is eliminated for BJ's. That's all we're really asking. If you look at most of the studies that's being done, the traffic on 280 would probably choose, and we're saying that, we're watching people come up from 459 and if they're going down Valleydale, they'll cut in or follow our street to go down Valleydale. They're doing the same thing when they come from Chelsea. They'll turn on us and go back up to Valleydale. It's easier for...
I pause this. What entrance are you facing? What's it, what entrance, so I'll be clear. What entrance refers to the obvious?
The one that's on the Inverness Center Drive.
Okay, okay, got you.
That's the exit we're talking about, where you see those four red dots along the line?
Yes.
Those are blind spots along the way. Most of the people in our cottages and in the big house, you will see people walking at all times to those areas. And all of a sudden, you're going to start seeing more and more traffic. And I have had a minimal amount of experience in my lifetime with truckers. And whatever your signs say doesn't really matter. When they're trying to make a delivery and get on somewhere else, they're going to go to the point of least resistance. That's the point the truck is going to go on and they will be on that street. And so a lot of people going in and out of that parking lot. What we as residents would like to see is the city council decide, along with everything, if they've got enough entrances and exits off of the other two location streets to eliminate that one. And I guess my good question to all of you is this. If your parents were living at either one of those two locations, how would you feel about their safety and their security and their peace of mind and their vibrant years of life? Thank you.
Council members, mayor, thank you. I'm that, it's Casey, 22-year resident of Hoover. Thank you for what you've done for the city thus far in your service. I know our community continues to thrive and we appreciate that. Again, to Gary's point tonight, I'll reiterate some of our thoughts. I'm a resident of Lake Heather. I'm a father of six kids, aging from age 21 down to seven, and three of those kids are driving, 21, 18, and 16. As we talk about this tonight, I'll further reiterate what Gary said. If you look going down 280 East, so on the far right side of the map that you have there, as residents come down, their path of least resistance, as we'll talk about tonight, if the plan stays as they currently stand, will be in Inverness Center Drive. In no way will they take those four lights that it's going to take. You've got to go through the light of MapCo, you've got to go through the light of Regions Bank, you've got to hit the third light of Valleydale Road, then take a right and go through two more lights if you're heading down 280 East. The easier route, and it will be found out very quickly as this development is being made, will be to come down Inverness Center Drive. To the same respect, if you're heading 280 West, coming back that way, the only way, there's two routes in. One is the Michigan turn that currently exists at Regions Bank, which if you've driven that route, it's a pain because you've got to make a U-turn there, sit at that light, and then take another right. So what most folks already do is they are, if they're coming anywhere near our neighborhood, period, Arnold Valleydale, is they continue down with the MapCo and take a left, which means from east and from west on 280, we will pile all of the traffic for BJ's on Inverness Center Drive. It's currently a four-lane road, which means traffic goes pretty quickly across there. There are five blind spots already illustrated on this map. The only way residents come out of Lake Heather, I'll specifically speak for Lake Heather, is to cross the two lanes and sit in the median and wait for the remaining four other two lanes to go. So what I'm concerned about, and the reason I'm here, as a father of six, I have plenty to do tonight, believe me, is I'm concerned about my 16-year-old pulling out of a neighborhood, across two lanes, with all the traffic being dumped on it. We believe that that can be alleviated by the turn. If it's at the corner right there, about where that A is on the API, there's a curb cut that is currently scheduled. We believe if that curb cut would be eliminated from the plan, we could coexist in more harmony. At the same time, what I didn't mention is that the traffic coming out of BJ's will continue to pass by Danbury as well because if you're coming out, you're going to take, and you want to go 280 West toward the summit or toward downtown. Are you going to come out of front on Valleydale and take that light and the light of 280 and then two more lights? Never, you're going to take a right out. So we're now in traffic, in-out traffic on already what is somewhat of a congested four-lane highway. So I ask you as council members serving our citizens, in the interest of my kids and our community, that we eliminate the cut. What would you do if you're a 16-year-old and your kids walking down the neighborhood sidewalks? If you lived in this community, what would you do? That's my only request, singular request, and why I'm here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could we have someone from the city just talk about the current traffic plan for this project?
Yes, sir. I'm asked, Blake, I think we have a proposal that you'd like to share tonight that addresses this. So Blake, you'll come up and share what we talked about the last few days with some residents as well as our staff.
Do we have imagery? We have imagery at all for the suggestion?
No, I can do it off of this.
We can do it off of this, that's okay, for what we're proposing. So what we're hearing, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're hearing is that should that access point into the new development from Inverness Center Drive, if that access point were eliminated, then that solves the issue and we can coexist and we can move forward. Is that...
It minimizes it.
It minimizes it? Sure, understood, understood. But from what I'm hearing and what I've heard is that if that access goes away, then there can be harm.
Makes it far more palatable.
Understood, okay. So in order to do that, there are several things that need to happen. So first off, we would have to study what traffic does at or on Inverness Center Drive and what it does on Valleydale Road if that access point were eliminated. Once that study comes back, then that'll give us a little bit clearer direction on what the impacts are. But we cannot, as Hoover, we cannot unilaterally make that decision because it affects, directly affects, Valleydale Road, which is County Route 17, owned and operated and maintained by Shelby County. So they would have to work in collaboration with Shelby County. If they review the traffic study and were comfortable with it, if we review the traffic study and we're comfortable with it, then that would be something that we could entertain at that point. What we're prepared to do as the city is we are prepared to order this traffic study, pay for this traffic study. We don't feel that it's fair for us to put that cost and that extra burden on the developer at this point because it's something that we are asking for. Order the traffic study, have that traffic study come in, review that traffic study, and that would be our steps.
So Blake, just to be clear, prior to coming in, you said that Eldon, was it Eldon?
Yes, sir.
In transportation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm assuming Skipper is going to be a consultant?
I would recommend Skipper, sure. They're well-renowned, sure.
Has he given you estimated time on that would take?
I think I would feel more comfortable if we did new traffic counts as well.
Okay.
So if we're looking at traffic counts, then we would want to take schools into account?
Right.
School traffic into account. So you're looking late August, early September before you can get the counts? And you're probably looking at two months to do the actual report, two to three months.
So we're talking about probably October, November is final report?
I think early August, before we can review it.
Do we have a traffic study already conducted on ICD, what the traffic will be with this proposed, with the curb already in?
Yes, based off of the current design, yes, there is a traffic study. But this is, this is a wrinkle, I'll call it a wrinkle, in caveat to that traffic study. So that traffic study was done with that access in place. So taking that out changes the traffic pattern, so we would have to study that to see what that does.
Will that new traffic study address ICD and Valleydale Road together?
It would address, what do you mean by that?
Inverness Center Drive, will it show pre-gone post-curb cut for Inverness Center Drive?
Yes, for, in that area, just in that section.
So Blake, can they take the study, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, and interpolate it? Interplace it with the data they already have? Because if the data's done within what, five years or so, and still has some validity?
I think you're leaning those a little bit short than five years.
It is.
It is. So just so that everybody's more comfortable, I would recommend doing a new traffic count. That would be a way to expedite it, if you could take those numbers and add a multiplier to it. But in order to get hard data,
Right, right.
Instead of relying on, now, these multipliers are industry standard and they're improved by ALBI and Transportation Engineering. So that, that would be that approach, I think, to make everybody more comfortable on this one. I think we would order a new traffic study, or a new traffic count.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So just to reiterate, this is not a city of Hoover alone project that would need approval. It would also need to go through Shelby County as well.
That's correct.
And just to clarify as well, this project with the current zoning and the current plans for everything, it is good to go, correct? This never came before city council for a vote at any point during our tenure on the council because everything had been met to current.
Well, if you'll remember, there have been several iterations for this project.
Right.
So the developer has been very responsive, has met with the citizens. We've met with the citizens out there as well. So it reduced, the original access was full access. Right out, left out, right in, left in. That has been reduced to what you're seeing today would be a right out, left in, and right in. That makes sense.
As far as Inverness Center Drive goes, the blind spots represented by the red dots up there. I know I spoke with Ken and others, some traffic calming ideas. You know, we tossed out the idea of a traffic circle that would help, but that was not recommended for various reasons. Are there any other, if, just say that the turn on Inverness Center Drive stays, are there any other traffic calming on Inverness Center Drive that could occur to help alleviate some of these concerns, such as traffic lights or whatever?
We could look at that. I don't know that I'm prepared to give a recommendation tonight on that, but that's something that we could look at. I would caution on traffic circles aroundabouts. They can be very confusing on a two-lane road. And you add multiple lanes to that, it gets very confusing for older drivers, younger drivers, middle-aged drivers. They're very confusing. It's not something that we're accustomed to.
It was four-lane, I wouldn't recommend.
Right. But we run into issues with stop signs as well, just putting a stop sign or a stop control piece. We had to recently take some out just because of the impacts that were on that.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So it is something that we can't just say, yes, let's put stops on here. We need to...
And I stopped, I wanted, you know, good traffic lights that would better control. Having a crossover medium turn, especially a young, I've got a 16-year-old driver myself, so I totally understand.
There's a warrant analysis that would have to be done for a new signal, so that's all part of that. And if there's other questions about that, we'd get John Anthony up here to talk. But I think we would need to look at that and study that a little bit further if we're going to look at trying to eliminate some of those blind spots for traffic calming on Inverness Center Drive.
Really, I, without sounding like I'm, it's going to come across the wrong way here, I think, but there's nothing that this council can do to stop this project. That's not within our control. We can't rezone the land. And as Mr. Miller has stated, we have a terrific partnership with Shelby County. You know, we have to continue that partnership as far as the traffic flow goes to this project. But I think we're all committed, as council, mayor's office, staff, the developer, residents. Let's make this the best project that it can be, we're all concerned, so that, you know, we can touch on some of these issues that you're saying, that you're talking about. And just to prove.
Yes, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We were here dealing with an old guy here, so you guys were talking about the studies that they, let me try to get straight. You're going to do a study on the traffic flow on Inverness Center Drive, correct? And where else?
Valleydale.
So if it shows that by eliminating that exit, there puts too much traffic on Valleydale, then you would not be in favor of that, correct?
I can't speak for Shelby County.
Oh, I know. But that's, I'm thinking, why else would you do the study? Then that would then again almost prove our point that there will be more traffic on Inverness Center Drive. If it looks like there's going to be, not going to be that much more traffic on Valleydale than Inverness Center Drive, what does that prove to us?
We have to find a study to see exactly.
I understand, yeah. I liked it better when I was in the military, they usually gave me a yes or a no. But it, all we're after is trying to eliminate one exit. You made a statement, you couldn't do that. So it's not in your power as a city council to vote not to have that exit there. You cannot do that, it's not in your power.
No, sir.
Are you absolutely certain of what you're saying?
We don't have legal here, but I would refer to Mr. Martin, who's our planner, if you don't mind, speaking on that question. But as far as the traffic study, if you're talking about eliminating an exit off of a development, we can't unilaterally do so without having the data to back up our decision. I understand that the traffic study delays and may not come back with the answer that we want to hear.
Will this traffic study delay, delay the acceptance and beginning of doing work on that facility?
I can't speak to that.
You can.
Yeah, if we can let Mr. Morgan respond, thank you.
Concerning the access point, in preparation for this particular issue, I did go back and try to find other examples where there may have been restrictions placed on access. And the only ones that I can find where we, the city, restricted access to a public street is generally related to either master plan developments or a planned unit development where that was a condition placed in the development. Or if there was another zoning entitlement that was needed. We have some instances on Highway 150 over the years where there were rezonings that occurred. One that comes to mind is a bit of C2 community commercial property that is adjacent to Paradise Lakes, that particular development. But in that case, the property owner was seeking a new zoning designation. They were seeking a zoning entitlement for that property. And there are instances where conditions were placed on zoning of the property as part of the developer, property owner coming and requesting the change in the zoning status. There was a bit of conversation and conditions that were worked out to try to deal with potential impacts that that new zoning designation, that new zoning entitlements would have. potential impacts that that new zoning designation, that new zoning entitlements would have. In this particular case, it's, it's a bit different because we are dealing with a piece of property, and the gentleman earlier eloquently stated that it has been zoned for commercial development in the city of Hoover since it was annexed in 1990. This property has been zoned PC plan commercial, which allows for a variety of commercial or retail uses, including the ones that had been proposed. Now, we did have a case where the developer came and asked for an additional zoning entitlement that he wasn't allowed to have by right, and that was with gasoline service. That particular zoning entitlement, application, the conditional use application went before the planning commission. And we did have considerable public input at that stage against, largely against, having that component added to this property, and a lot of the same concerns of those being shared tonight. And at that particular time, the planning commission denied the application. So it did not even proceed to this body, the council, for consideration. Now, if there was an opportunity there where there was a rezoning or an additional zoning entitlement as a condition of approval of that, there is history where we have had conditions placed, limited access. But to establish that for a property that is currently zoned with a development proposed that is permitted by right with no additional zoning entitlements, I'm just not familiar with a case where access has been completely denied.
So let me just say, so how many, how many rooftops do we have already zoned, that can be built remaining? I'm just going a little over this, so I can make sure I understand. How many rooftops do we have left in the city of Hoover that can't be built? It's like ten thousand?
Ooh.
At least six.
Left on that are entitled and have not been mounted.
Yeah, yes. There's always say five, I think it's like five or six thousand if I'm correct, but we can, we can evaluate that and not get, we state the actual number next time. So I do know Hoover, over the last X number of years, you start looking at the loss bridge and all the properties were, you know, regardless if they are just land that have not been any site civil work or any dirt moved on, if they're already rezoned, if they already have been zoned for X, you, you don't have flexibility to modify. However, in some cases, as Mr. Martin discussed, some of these properties did not have the poor site to have mixed use, all right? Twenty-five years ago, where they wanted commercial there, they wanted stores there, so then they had to come back and ask, well, we want these acreage to be commercial. And correct me if I was back on them. And so now, it's one of those conversations with this particular council, whatever council is in place, okay, well, since you asked for that change, let's talk about the entire putt, the development, and see if we can make some changes there so you can have that. So I think you're referring to something that's already in place that, you know, is not a new development and not changing of a zoning to make other modifications associated with said zoning. Or is that, if I'm wrong, pushback on that.
No, that's, that's accurate. Yeah, and, and you were, you were right, about six thousand units remain.
Any additional?
My name is Susan Clark, I live in Inverness. And you're quite right, the Inverness putt is about fifty, was built about fifty years ago or more. But I wanted to just point out that there may not be precedent in being able to do something like this, but there, Hoover has had precedent in the way they've treated this road. Very recently, they have built the sidewalks and a crosswalk between the two Danbury properties to make it safer and better for those residents who are nearby and who are lining that road. So I would just kind of put to you maybe that keeping that in mind, there is precedent for protecting that road. And that's best, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Brian Volch, and I apologize if some of my questions have been answered in prior meetings, but my wife and I have been residents of Hoover for all of our fifteen years of marriage, property owners for, I believe, eleven of those, and have lived in Beaumont neighborhood for all of the time we've owned property, both two house on a neighborhood. Well, one thing I was curious about is if we claim we can't require the development to block that exit on Inverness Center Drive, why can we require them only to have one entrance on Valleydale Road? Why not four or five? If I were developing this property, a right turn off of Valleydale going west at the far eastern corner of the property would be really attractive, would make that end unit for a restaurant look really good. Somebody somewhere said, no, you can't do that, so what precedent was used there and why can't be applied somewhere else? The second thing that I had is I wanted to ask the councilman, how many of you live in an area of Hoover where you commute on 280 every day? Okay, so none of you do? My question revolves, okay, so you do this one?
I don't live, but I have to commute on 280 every day.
Okay. Do you enjoy it? Do you think, man, this is the epitome of road design, right?
I'm an engineer, so I, this is, keep that on what you think.
You see, you see a few areas for improvement, right? Okay. So I'm speaking to the least one person I understand. My question on the traffic study is when, Blake?
Yes.
Okay. When Blake brought up how, when we need to improve, include Shelby County for the impact on Valleydale Road, at what point do we bring in the state government or even the federal government, if they're involved, I don't know, on the impact to US 280? Because currently, my biggest concern is when you look at a development like this for Costco, Sam's, the BJ's, when I looked around in Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, Louisiana, Mississippi, the furthest away from an interstate highway I could find one of that ilk was the Sam's Club in Hoover, which is not, you know, I think, if you look at the area around the Sam's Club, I think that gives you somewhat of an indication of what you can expect for residents around this development. But my question is, have we looked, what's the radius? Do any of you know what the radius was for the traffic study? Because while I agree with, I agree with Maddox on the impacts to I, to Inverness Center Drive dramatically, I think the bigger problem is going to be felt by everyone who commutes on that road with hundreds, if not thousands, of cars per hour coming down that road. And to speak to egress, even if you go left out of this new development and go east on Valleydale Road toward 280 and turn left, or you come to Valleydale, go west, then turn on Inverness Center Drive and go, currently, I would imagine everybody here from my neighborhoods can confirm, more often than not, I'd say half of the days when I leave to go west on 280 toward downtown in my office, I don't get through the first light cycle. And that's at seven fifteen, seven thirty in the morning, before school traffic and without a litany of new cars from this retail development. So I was curious if you could clarify, number one, the logic used on everywhere we develop, we build a development, we don't just make it open curves or you can turn in wherever, you know, we have situations there. And then secondly, how do we determine the radius of the traffic study? Because I think, it could be because it's, when it's not Hoover, you know, as you go up that road, it's not Shelby County, it's some Jefferson, it's a podge-podge, but I think that is the bigger issue not being addressed.
So let me just give you my take. And I think the goal is to have a traffic study to try to make, have a somewhat of a marriage right. So this is the challenge always. I'll give you an example. And pushback on me, Mary, I was fire marsh about forty years, so you, I've seen a lot of developments in this area. Another chief back there, I know a lot of folks here have been here a long time. When a, when a development of tons of acres are developed, is developed with no land and is set, I'll give you an example, the Hoover Matt, Hoover Matt complex. And then the argument is that neighborhood A comes in and they move there, knowing they moved around a, the Hoover Matt that has tons of development that can be developed year ten or year hundred, whatever month. So what we have ran into, then neighborhood B comes in, and neighborhood A say, neighborhood B don't need to be there because it don't cause too much traffic in the area. And then A and B, they get put in place. And then let's go down the road and try and play hot shots. So neighborhood K needs to be developed, so way through whatever is stating that, that's problematic because too much. So, so what occurs is, is that you have an area that's developed, is already set for whatever the, the zoning is for and is moved in that particular area. As far as, again, I'm not a, I'm a civil, I'm a hydraulic engineer, or it's not space, but I've been around a little bit of transportation, but that's not my space. When they're doing designs, they have to do a traffic count. Right now, I want to say 280 goes between like five different cities and two counties. You, you can't put an egress in if it's so close to another egress, a separation lane has to be a certain type of way. So when they look at that, they have to look at all of those particular items. I don't know if Valleydale, what is it, Blake, is, are they rated A through F? Is it rated, is it still, I'm trying to recall that. I mean, in general lines of traffic, is it rated A through F, A being the best? So if, if a particular road is rated, you know, E, I mean, F, then, you know, what occurs is that when they do the study, they're say, this development has to have egress out because we can't put, make that street that's already F continue to be impacted. So I just, this is, is a lot, the goals along with that entire analogy. But I just want to just make sure I made that statement. But I think the biggest speech we need to do, to agree with Blake, that, you know, doing a, a traffic council, at least we have no, kind of goal from there, but I definitely would like to hear from the developers, whether they would like to talk and all. And from that, because I just want to give my two cents on that.
Okay, so the other question that we don't really have an answer on, on like what logic is used on, like, for example, on the north corner of the property, we could have put the freight exit right there, right adjacent to Danbury, right adjacent to ICD, and for some reason, somebody said, that's not a good idea, we shouldn't do that. And whether a law stipulates that we have the right to do that or not, someone somewhere had a conversation and came to the realization, you know what, we need to move that away from where it's directly adjacent to where hundreds of elderly people sleep.
We can let Blake, thank you, thank you so much. So Blake, just something quick, in theory, when we, when you're looking at these designs and you have all the parties involved, the studies come in, and you go through a list of what can be accepted by Shelby County versus X Way, and they look at this, can you explain that, just a little bit of the, the means of method and the structure from analysis standpoint?
So.
And I'll go a little bit different, I'm not trying to.
Sure, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Okay.
So that's a little bit different, so I would much rather have Skipper here to describe their logic and their process. As it relates to the freight, that, from my knowledge, Mac, help me out with this, my knowledge, that came directly, the modification to the development came directly from planning commission's meeting with the residents and with the comments based off of that. So there is no truck traffic that would be servicing that development that would be held on Inverness Center Drive. They've got a U-turn that they.
I wasn't suggesting there was, I was just illustrating that they didn't put it there for a reason.
And that was in direct, that was a direct relation to the comments received from the citizens?
Okay, so comments can lead to change, even though the law doesn't require them? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's the point, that's why we're all here tonight about Inverness Center Drive, is he's just definitively like illuminated, hey, this came from conversation and concerns from residents. So it can be changed and altered. And we actually all sat in a meeting where we got told that if in fact, that could be done, if Inverness Center Drive situation could be closed off, we got told by people who worked for the city of Hoover, that that wasn't something they could do for us, they had to get on the phone with the developer, and the developer had to agree to it, that it was up to developers. So really, now at this point, if we're able to do it, who's in charge of it and how do we get it done?
Yeah, I, I still want to go back to, I understand that point on the property, but any egress all, we still need to get to Shelby County and all the players involved. And that's, and I think that's what was being said. I think, again, I don't know how long this fight is going to be going on, I said, but the, the, we've perceived as a city, a lot of comments, so they were taken into consideration with the different entities. So I think, again, what Blake is.
And the final thing I'd heard an answer on was the radius of traffic.
Let me finish for a second. So I think Blake is, is wanting to do a traffic count, and then we'll go back to the entities. And the goal again, I want to say this, the goal is to get comments here, I think that's the reason why, from residents, that's the whole goal here, just like with prior, so we can take those back to see what, what we can and not. So I just want to make sure we're clear on the goal. The goal is here not to take a vote, to ram it down anyone's throat, that's not the goal here, the goal is to get comments. And I'm going to be real clear, I get it, I mean, in a community, and we did not have our neighbors advocating for certain things, and everything would go up in a community because no one cares. So I'm going to be real clear that we want residents like that because we have trash everywhere, Martin would get tons of emails about folks not cutting their grass and things of being a nuisance. So we rely on, on residents to be residents and, and, and talk about things. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on the, just the tone and the whole purpose of the, of the meeting.
Sure. And then where could I expect an answer on the radius of this traffic study? Because I feel like anything short of three miles in each direction is going to be really short sighted.
I'd have to get with Skipper. I'd have to get with Skipper to determine what that was on.
Do you know offhand what the radius was from the one that was done in prior?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, what's your name, if you don't mind?
Brian Volch.
All right, sir. Yes, sir. If we can, all the questions that are discussed today, when we do come back with the study, individually are addressed upon the different questions that were asked. I think that, Mayor, are you fine with that?
I'd be happy to have Skipper here presenting that study. So they can answer those questions correctly.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, gentlemen, thank you very much. I understand I'm here to make a motion to cancel the project. Little bit of humor, though. So I'm Cody Lynn, I recognize a few familiar faces, I'm the executive director at Danbury Inverness, a retirement community that has been mentioned multiple times a year. Obviously, I concur with many of the thoughts and comments here regarding the traffic, and I will not speak to that. I think that's been done, and I say I'm grateful for your comments and your suggestions thus far of what we can do. I would agree with the statement instead, you know, this is likely coming our way, and even as a community, our residents, we want to also find a way to make this work, to cohabitate in such a way that it has been mutual to everyone. The other concern that I have, and I think the best way to tell the story is to share a little bit about where I'm from, and I'll be brief, my stomach's pounding. I, I live in Childersburg. I do know how to read and write. So that's Talladega County. Couple of things about that tell you just to know about me from being that area, I'm not a very bright man, a little bit of a redneck maybe, it's okay. But the other thing is we're fortunate to have a lot more land in that area. And so I don't have a lot of property where my house sits, but I have enough to where when I sit at my dining room table, look out the doors, I see a nice, beautiful yard where my kids can play, and I have trees behind. A few weeks ago, I was talking to my wife, and I was telling her about this potential property, and she said, and I'm being transparent, really? Now by the inflection of her voice, you can tell that she was somewhat excited, because again, we live in Childersburg, and we have a Piggly Wiggly. And twelve Mexican restaurants. So we have a membership to Sam's, as was just mentioned, traffic is a nightmare. If we want anything of that nature, it's, it's a hike for us. And so the prospect intrigued her, and as I sat at the dining room table, I said, look out the doors, and imagine it sits right there. Gentlemen, I don't know where you live, I don't know what your properties look like. I don't know if anyone is really opposed to the idea of more options and more restaurants, more revenue, more jobs, but I think it's how we get. more revenue, more jobs, but I think it's how we get there that is so concerning, you know? Anytime something like this happens, I just ask the question, who benefits? No one's voting for me, I'm not worried about revenue, but I am worried about my people. And if you can advance the slides, just a few, I believe maybe three or four, you'll see, keep going, one more, one more, one more. That's our property there. So our community sits on about 17 acres, you see the sidewalk there that goes all the way around the building, and I don't know if this is accurate, I didn't put this together, but our property line is very close, whether it's actually the yellow line, whether it's the tree line, it's right in that area. And so I realize, based on some of the statements, this is not your position or place to say, okay, here's what we're going to do for you, but I recognize the opportunity we have here. I also recognize I'm bringing an emotional element to an analytical problem. We don't make decisions on emotions, but I understand the developers here as well. We want to coexist. We, I said it to a resident the other day in our town hall, we want to find a way to make lemonade out of lemons. So I'm here just to ask you, as it was said earlier, if that was your mom's silver Lexus, which it probably is all of your moms, right? And this was her sidewalk, which we market because it goes all the way around our building into half a mile. How would you feel? When you stare out and you see the back of a building, and you see compactors and delivery trucks, and you hear impact wrenches or maybe a tire center, it has a different feel. They moved to this community to intentionally enjoy peacefully the last season of their life. And all I'm asking is just for consideration, if there is a way that you can support us, all of our neighbors, whether that's through traffic, whether it's a sound barrier, sound wall, we just wish you'd take that into consideration. Thank you.
Any additional questions? I do want, yes, I did want to say that the developer did, something, go ahead, sorry.
I just want to say thank you for listening, the four of you guys, the mayor for coming to listen. I want to say thank you for the developer for having a vision to come to Hoover and build something great. I want to give a, if you'll go back to the slide that showed Everness, because I want to talk to the city council, and to the mayor, and the developers, the people who create Everness. We had a pud a year ago, and the people that administered the pud, they died, they left the area, and the city was left to take care of that pud. The integrity of the pud, if you'll go to that slide, I have benefited from the city not holding to the integrity of the pud. You guys let Signature Home create the home that I live in, there was a mountain there, it was supposed to be a strip mall. Keep going back.
Mitzi, I'm sorry to interrupt. For the record, could you state your name for the question?
Yes, Mitzi Acre. I live in Everness Highlands, a little community there. In fact, we've lived there 20 years, I was pregnant with my first son when we moved there, and I told my husband, I'm like, this is a great property, there's no other houses this close to 280, and within that price range, and then a couple of years later, Beaumont was built, so we're like, okay, we got to wait a few years to get our property value back up. But we love the idea of living near a strip mall, we love the idea of being able to walk to the grocery store. The community really didn't develop as much as we wanted it to be walkable, you still, when you're walking across Valleydale, you're taking your life into your own hands. But those houses weren't supposed to be there, Beaumont wasn't supposed to be there, I think Lake Heather was supposed to be there, I don't think Danbury was supposed to be there, I don't think the retirement home was supposed to be there. So I say all that to say, the pud's integrity has been destroyed. So yes, commercial development was supposed to be there, but it was supposed to be where most of those homes are. I just asked you guys to make sure, before you start digging, before you start cutting down trees, to make sure the sewer system can withstand the property. We know from the study, I've got the study on my phone if y'all want the traffic study, we know from the traffic study, they're expecting 9,000 cars, that's a lot of flushes a day. So we've got to make sure our infrastructure was not built for our homes, the infrastructure was not built for big box stores, and I would like to encourage you, I'm not saying don't do this one because you can't, but this isn't a big box store, this is a wholesale warehouse. The market, I do marketing for a living, the market isn't the neighborhood, the market isn't Hoover, the market is from Gadsden where I used to live, to Tuscaloosa, to Auburn, it's a regional market.
I know.
It's not just a little box store, it is a wholesale warehouse, and we've been in line on the overpass, waiting for traffic to pass on Costco. So let this pass, but the next, let's put in some, a new zoning that calls it what these warehouses are, it's not a wholesale, I mean, it is a wholesale warehouse. You know, Kmart used to be where Kohl's is, I don't know if y'all remember that, that was a big store. I think the road issue, that is the minimum you can do, I think about all the times I've been in Everness Highland pulling out, I don't see Kohl's traffic coming my way, they stop, they pull in, they get back on 280, they stay on Valleydale. I am concerned when we build out, that people are going, there's going to be a lot more traffic on Valleydale, and that infrastructure is not there. You can say we're four-laning it, but we're not four-laning it tomorrow. In fact, my friends at the power company are saying it's going to be years, and we do have the things fall, the properties fall, but we're, my kids will be through Span Park before we see a four-lane. So my thoughts to the city council is, for all of Hoover, take the integrity of what those communities were meant to be, there's only supposed to be two grocery stores in all of Everness. They had a great vision for Everness, and I feel like that we're devaluing our communities that we built to be great. And Ken Clark has a whole history book on Everness, if you want to read it, about how it has changed over the years, and a group of residents took over the lake because they knew that it was being polluted. So we have people that believe in the area, they bought into the area because they bought into a dream, and we want to see great development here. We want to see Mr. Owens develop that into something that we can all be proud to go to, that we can make our kids work at, and that's part of the community. And thank you again for listening, because I know y'all did not have to have this meeting, and thank you for listening.
Last thing I'll say, thank you everyone for showing up today. I did want to say thank you to Wendy, our city clerk. When the developer was scheduled to come and give a presentation, we asked Wendy to really try to put out information to ensure individuals knew, not to put it on the agenda for a vote, but to have a lot more transparency to get feedback, we know the developer hasn't made a lot of changes on it, but wanted, since it's coming forward to council, to everyone to see it again, right? And thank you, Steve, for, I'm not going to mention your last name until I get it right, so, Scavo for reaching out to us, and Glimmy for, I've known you for a while, to make this happen, thank you so much to Dr. Millbrook as well, too. But if nothing else is there to say, the meeting is adjourned.